Okay, I would like to call the meeting of the Board of Supervisors to order. Welcome everyone in attendance and also those who are joining us by YouTube. Today we will have the minutes of the previous meetings will be approved. But before that, we're going to have the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation. And Kristi, you're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then Kendra, you're going to do the invocation.
Dear my Father, as we gather together, we praise you for this day and your purpose for it. Reset our hearts and minds as we sit in your presence. Give us renewed strength and godly courage to pursue your will. Keep love at the forefront of our minds today and a guiding light for all we set out to accomplish. In your name we pray.
Amen. Okay, board members, in your packets you have the minutes for three prior meetings. I've been informed that we need to vote on each one of those independently, so we'll review the ones for May 12, 2020. Do you have any comments or discussion?
Madam Chairman, I move we approve the May 12 minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor. The motion passes. Also, we have the minutes for May 18, 2020. Again, do you have any comments or corrections?
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for May 18.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor. Motion passes. Lastly, we have the minutes for May 28, 2020. Do we have any comments or corrections?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor. Any opposed? And then the financial report we'll have from Lisa.
Madam Chairman, you have your packet here that has the financial information that we typically get from the Sheriff's Office, sorry, from the Treasury Office each month. I'm not going to review it all. We'll cover some of it so we can get an idea of where we stand as of June 9th date here and the end of May. If you look at your first report here, it's the revenue summary. As of June 9, 2020, for revenue, we received $26,382,504. I'm sorry, that's the amount that was appropriated. The year-to-date received is $25,127,451,52, leaving a balance of $1,255,052. If you, the next page is, just flip through, this shows by each fund, but if you get to the end, the first, what I just talked about was just for Fund One. When you get to Page Six, for all funds, the budget was amended to $90,454,539. The year-to-date amount for all funds received revenue is $74,923,556,61. The next report, which leaves a balance of $15,539,82. The next report is the opposite side of that, the expenditure summary for Fund One. The appropriated amount is $26,489,486. The year-to-date spent is $18,167,956,56, with a balance of $8,321,529,44. That's for Fund One. Then if you move to Page, I believe it's Page Five, total expenditures for all funds, again, the appropriated budget, the approved budget amended is $90,454,539. The year-to-date expended is $68,625,763,18, leaving a balance of $21,828,775,82 in your expenditures. Again, there's some reports there in your packet I'm not necessarily going to talk about. We'll move on to the next one, the county expenses and appropriations that shows a comparison between May 31, 2020 to May 31, 2019. The bank balance and the CD amounts have increased to $13,767,012,23. The deposits were up and expenses down in May for a subtotal of $13,246,345,78, leaving us, we have a bank balance as of May 31 of $12,393,892,76, and that compares to $9,876,9620 in the same time, May 31, 2019. So there was a $2,523,196,56 increase in their bank balance at the same time last year, from last year. And again, I just think it's, on the next page, just the bank balance is reflected there, $12,393,892,76 as of May 31. There's additional information there in your packet with the uncollected county tax and the water sewer revenue, and then there's the treasurer's accountability report. If you'd like to talk about those, we can. I think the last page on there kind of sums up your fund balances. It shows your beginning balance and your general fund revenue, and your ending balance as of 5:31, and your total fund balances there for all funds. Ending balance of May 31 was $17,123,052,86.
Okay. Board members, do you have any questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Lisa. Next, we'll have the payment of invoices by Mr. Atkins.
Okay. I guess first thing to do is to do our appropriations. We have, on the blue sheet, we have in front of you here, the General County. On Page Two is the worksheet for it, but we basically have appropriations through the General County of $1,570,000 even.
Move to approve, Madam Chairman.
Second. All in favor.
For Social Services, we have appropriations of, technically, can we appropriate it out of next year's budget?
Be a question for the chairman.
No, I don't think so, not unless you pass it.
Okay, so I think instead of the $425 we're looking at there, we need to appropriate the $365,000 for the Social Services.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
For the schools, we have total appropriations for operations of $9,648,188.81, and also school debt and capital outlay of $2,176.19.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed?
Sheriff's Department Fund 746 of $23,371.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Sheriff's Department Fund 747 for $10,271.28.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Sheriff's Department Fund 748 for $1,389.09.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Callen, a second by Miss Steele. All in favor? Any opposed?
And finally, Recovery Court, Fund 749 of $193.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor.
And then we have an accounts payable list. It's not appropriation, but approving the payables of $952,861.16.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm looking for it on the sheet.
First one, only one.
Oh, I see it.
We've appropriated, now we're approving it.
I'm with you. So moved.
Roscoe. We have a motion by Miss Steele, a second by Mr. Call, all in favor?
I'm sitting on the back.
Any opposed? Thank you so much. All right. We will open the time out now for citizens' time. Did anybody sign up to speak? No. Okay, then we will close citizens' time. Next on the agenda is a report from Kendra Hayden on the Smith Strong Loan Full Fund Update.
So, the EDA asked me to come and give you guys a quick update for COVID-19 impact for small businesses in Smith County. They decided to partner with the Chamber and Saltville IDA to come up with the Smith Strong Fund, and it is a $5,000 per business loan at zero interest, payable six months after the approval of the loan, and then up to two years for repayment. They're, currently, we're accepting applications. I talked to Sarah today, and we've gotten five so far just from our local community. She's reaching further out to see if we can maybe impact a couple more businesses besides just right here in Marion. We will have a committee on the EDA that consists of three members, myself and Sarah, and then two members from the Saltville IDA to review all the applications. And then I can give you guys an update on who gets what.
When is the deadline, Kendra?
We don't really have a deadline. She's just putting it out there, saying who all are interested. This also kind of pairs with the federal funding because they ran out so quickly for small businesses, so we're trying to fill that gap for people who applied but didn't get funding or didn't meet the criteria. They can't go together, so if they've got the federal funding, then they can't receive funding from us locally.
Is there anything on the Smith County website that would, that people could go to and get information about?
We can add it if it's not. I know it's on the Chamber's website.
Maybe it could be linked.
Yeah, we can definitely do that. There's an application process, and they have to meet certain requirements, but it's, we can put it out there to pretty much anybody.
Madam Chairman, a question. What's, I know it sounds crazy, but what's the definition of small business for this month?
I believe it was under 50 employees, I think, and it pairs with the federal requirements as well. Pretty much everything that they require, we are also requiring.
Madam Chairman, if I may make a comment. I just want to commend the Economic Development Authority and the IDA of Saltville and Chamber for working together. I think this is a great partnership to really show the small businesses support during this time because certainly many of them are struggling, and these funds will probably help keep their doors open. So I just want to thank those three entities for partnering together and making this happen.
It's always good to have cooperative efforts, isn't it?
Absolutely.
Very good.
All right. Thank you all. Thank you.
Okay, we, next have a public hearing. I will open the public hearing for the Smith County Public Schools FY '20-21 budget.
Too early.
I think you need to wait till 5:30 to.
Oh, okay. Well, I guess we can go on down to new business then. So, the new business is the CDBG COVID-19 grant, and that's Erin.
If you're looking, your bounds packets, back on Page 40, you can use just Page One. This is, this is just a program I review, the CDBG program that we have used in the past for different type of grant activities, has now been opened up to new activities under COVID. One of those eligible activities is to work through your local food banks and their programs to supply, of course, more, more food, to try to reach out a little bit further than they are now, as long as they stay in the state of Virginia, and the ability to give out more food during this time. So, as of right now, we brought this PDC and four of the food banks have gotten together along with the town of Marion and just tried to figure out how to collectively come together as a county as a whole because we have better chances to get funding and to get more funding if we come together as a whole. So, we've got, we've got four food banks on board, and I think we can get up to around $300,000 for this. The grant, as it is right now, and I can't get too far into the particulars, but the grant is basically going to purchase food. It can be food from local restaurants if they're struggling now and they need to keep their doors open, we will be able to buy food from them, give it to the food banks, and the food banks will be able to give it out and all paid for by federal funds. There's the opportunity to expand what they do now with freezers and, you know, equipment, things of that nature. That's what we're looking at. In order to do this, we have to have two public hearings. The first public hearing is generic, and we will not do anything more than just review the CDBG program as a whole. The next public hearing will be programmed specific to that grant that we're going to buy for, of course, if you vote to move forward with it. And so, what I need from you, and of course, I'll answer any questions, but by the time we're done here, if you would like for us to pursue this, you know, as a county and work with the PDC for the application, and it's not going to cost you any money, there's no match money from the county. The PDC will do the administration stuff, it won't cost you any staff time. But if you want to do it and go forward with it, I will need a motion to schedule a public hearing for the first CDBG, for the, for the first CDBG, go ahead and join.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
We have a motion by Dr. Ratliff. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Roscoe, all in favor? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you, Erin. All right, so then, Lori, you have a Lee Highway Sewer connection update?
I do, and I'm bringing this before the board because there was a request made to have a meeting with myself and Erin from Mr. Watson-Gallahan, and I'm only going on information I had when I worked here, which apparently a lot has transpired from that time. So, I just wanted to bring it here instead of having another Water and Sewer Committee to just rehash what had been hashed before. So, Chris and I are new, but the rest of you on here were here before, so you all have the information. Erin kind of shared with me some documents that were on file about him making a request, and there was an extra $20,000 to $30,000 spent for his connection. So, I said I would bring it up. I'm bringing it up. I don't know that mine's are going to be changed. I'm not asking for mines to be changed because I think that the documents from prior meetings proved themselves, and so basically, I had said it's been hashed out, and Mr. Gallahan.
Were we talking about Mr. Gallahan?
Yes, at his site there, but next to Mike's gym. So, if anybody wants to comment on the decision that was made before.
Now she had some.
Yes. Because I wasn't here, so I don't have the information.
That was a rural water loan after I did that project, which requires when, that either a mandatory hookup or all the bills paid, because the biggest chunk of money that's ever been lost during water and sewer projects is that people say, "I want a meter, I'm going to hook a meter."
Right.
And then you never get paid, and the taxpayers has to pay for it. But this one specific deal, I happened to be inspecting in Wake County. That's my district.
Right.
Got a call from him, he first running the residential tap. He was livid, as Mr. Gallahan can get. And I said, "On the way home, I'll stop and talk to you." He was going to put in a nursing home, he's going to do this, and he wanted a commercial tap, and he wanted it on up next to his driveway. Normally, what the county does in situations like that is they go to the property line. That's been their standard. But to please him, we went further because it would have made a better hookup.
Sure.
He signed a user agreement that he wanted. It's on file. Since then, he never paid a penny up till I don't know what's now, but he was in here, he's been in here twice since then. We run his sewer, another $30,000 contractor put it in. Somebody got to pay for it.
Sure.
Well, he come in the first time. I never signed no agreement. I didn't want it. I don't have nothing out there, I'm not getting nothing, I'm losing money. "I'm sorry, somebody got to pay for it."
Sure.
Was my response. And the Water and Sewer Committee, I think Roscoe, you was on there. Come in a second time. He said, "If you'll just waive the penalties, I'll pay my bill." I think Lisa, you sat in on this. All right, we waived his penalties and paid his bill yet. I understand now we got a lien on him. Well, you know, there's a lot of people in Smith County who will never have water and sewer. It's not feasible.
Right.
And when the people who say they want water and sewer, and these projects go through, and they fail to pay the bill, then the taxpayers has to pick it up out of the general fund. And I think it's totally unfair.
Absolutely.
So, I think he owes what he asked for. We got his signature saying that's what he wanted.
Well, and that's what Mr. Salmer showed me the other day, so I thought just in a public forum, it could be rehashed, so I.
No, I appreciate it. I just wanted to fill you in on what's happened. We worked with him the first time, he wasn't happy. He wasn't going to do anything.
Right.
So the board itself, as a whole board, decided, you know, we want the economy to get better, you're going to try to put in this, we'll run your, a commercial tap.
Right.
If that's what you want. That's what he wanted. That's what he got.
Right.
Now he owes for it.
Right. Well, and I think when you mentioned the agreement with the grant that we got, everybody has to pay, I think us as a Water and Sewer Committee, we need to go back and make sure that that's all across the board on the county and what's happening and.
Well, I agree, and I'm all for that, and this is what's happened in the past with Smith County. Rural Water, and you jump in here anytime, Erin, actually mandates that you have mandatory hookup.
Right.
To get a loan from them. Smith County's kind of been in the gray area on whether we can enforce mandatory hookups or not, Mr. Turner. Our last attorney said we could, said we could. Who knows? I don't know. But if we ever do any more projects, that is one of their requirements. Am I right, Erin?
Yes, that's right, and to your point, if we borrow money from them and say that we will enforce and we don't enforce, it jeopardizes what happens to us in the future when we ask again.
I'm, you know, I'm, if I tell somebody I'm going to do something and I'm going to pay for it, I'm going to pay for it.
Sure.
If I had to take on another job, I don't expect somebody down the road on the other side of the country to pay for what I said I was going to pay for.
Sure.
I mean, that's just my thought.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the information. I said I would bring it up, and I'm bringing it up, and I didn't want to speak to it because I wasn't here, so thank you for that.
I'm in the same boat that we're in, as far as, I was given a call, sent on this to figure it out and finally pulled all the documents and amendments, and what, what the answer is, is you have already heard it twice and weighed in on it, and if you want to leave your decision as it is, you need to make no motion and move on with the meeting. You don't need to do anything to keep things as they are.
Right. Okay. It's more just an information thing, and I didn't want to call the Water and Sewer Committee.
And I'm not, I'm not being out of whack on you, I'm just filling you in.
Oh, sure.
You know, what we tried to do, you know, I, our biggest losses have been on some water projects. And one thing, when this thing come on, I wanted it, but, you know, we, I wanted to see that everybody said they was going to sign on, and we're going to take water, we're going to fulfill their duties, so this one would actually pay for itself. And, and I think it's something the county, no matter who sits here, needs, we owe it to the citizens.
Sure. And that's why I think we need to take a look at, at the requirements, and we need to, we need to pick a rule, and we need to stick with it, and we need to enforce it on everybody and be fair.
I agree with you 100%.
So, we can talk about that. We'll call Water and Sewer Committee meeting for that, but I appreciate the feedback.
Well, thank you for the clarification on that. I think it gives us more information to, to proceed with. It's not quite 5:30. Do we want to go ahead with the public hearing?
I can be quick on building grounds. If you want to make a change.
All right.
I can nicely hand this to Ron with ours next on the agenda.
Okay. Yeah, we'll follow the agenda.
These are the care back funds that, that are already in our account. You certified for them last meeting, they're already in our account. I do not have any more information other than I'm going to pass down this packet. This is our guidance as to how we do or don't spend the money. We have a lot of thoughts, but we don't have anything nailed down as to what we ought to use this money for, so I'm going to hand down, if you don't mind, take one, just information. I want you to please contact me if you have, you know, ideas, ways you think we ought to spend this, and we'll read it before the full board.
And Erin, we still don't have any update as far as if they're going to expand the uses or, the deadline for spending it is December the 30th of this year, is that correct? So right now, we're still within those guidelines.
That's incorrect, and no, we don't. We have some question and answer documents that are new, but I just feel like that they were any more lenient than the original document, so.
Yeah, when I read them, they were just more procedural things.
They were.
Okay.
Sizemore, what was the dollar amount? I think I've read it, but I can't put my finger on it right here that the county.
$2.6 million.
In the agenda?
$2.6 million.
All right, that's, okay, thank you. I know it's seen it, I just couldn't put my finger on it right away. Can you say we received that deposit?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
We will now open the public hearing for the Smith County Schools Budget FY '20-21. Lisa, do you want to read the advertisement?
Notice of public hearing of the Smith County School Budget for fiscal year commencing July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021, on June 9, 2020 at 5:30 p.m. This budget synopsis is prepared and published in accordance with Section 15.2-2506 and 22.1-93 of the Code of Virginia of 1950 as amended. The budget has been prepared and proposed on a basis of estimates made by Smith County School Boards. The adoption of this proposed budget shall require monthly appropriation by the Smith County Board of Supervisors as required in Section 15.2-2506 for any contemplated expenditures. The Smith County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comments on the proposed school board budget for fiscal year beginning July 1, 2020. The public hearing will be held in the Board of Supervisors Meeting Room, 121 Bagley Circle, Smith County Office Building on Tuesday, June 9 at 5:30 p.m. or soon thereafter. Interested persons may express their views by emailing citizen@smithcounty.org prior to the meeting. Written comments may also be mailed to Smith County, 121 Bagley Circle, Suite 100, Marion, Virginia, 24354, or by fax to 2767839314. All emails, written comments, and faxes must be received by 2 p.m. Tuesday, June 9, 2020. A full copy of the proposed Smith County School Board Budget is available for public review at the County Administrator's Office during regular business hours. Anyone having questions regarding the above may contact the County Administrator's Office at 2767833298, Monday through Friday from 8 a.m. to 5 p.m. In compliance with the provisions of the Americans with Disabilities Act, persons requiring special assistance to attend and participate in this hearing should have contacted Clegg Williams, ADA Coordinator, at 2767068315 at least 24 hours prior to the hearing. By order of the Smith County Board of Supervisors, Erin Sizemore, interim county administrator. Smith County School Budget, Operations Budget for the year beginning June 30, 2021, Revenue Summary for the Operations Budget. State revenue proposed is $28,807,106, with a difference of $1,221,051. Local revenue proposed is $8,215,575, with a difference of $400,000. Federal revenue remains the same at $5,529,055. State sales tax at $4,374,821, with a. State sales tax at $4,374,821, with a negative impact of $5,981,84. Other revenue at $2,476,132, again, a negative impact of $1,81,509. For total operations of $49,402,689, a total difference of $841,358. The Expenditure Summary for Operations Budget for proposed 2021 is $35,686,768. That's a difference of $637,22. Administration, $1,468,814, a gain of 14,251. Transportation, $2,546,120, a difference of $33,088. Facilities, $4,494,531, a gain of $1,540,76. Food Service, $3,773,795, a negative impact of $28,711. And Technology, $1,432,661, a difference of $37,932. Again, total operations budget expenditures is $49,402,689, with a difference of $841,358. For the Capital Outlay and Debt Service Budget for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. Local Funds Debt Service, $2,191,042, a difference of $1,005,22. Other Funds Interest Rebate, $487,113. There's no change from the current fiscal year. For total capital outlay of $2,678,155, with the total difference being $1,522. Expenditure Summary for Capital Outlay and Debt Service Budget is $2,678,155. Again, this is the same difference of $1,522.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Is there a motion to waive reading of the rules?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. I'll in favor. Motion passes. We will now open up for any speakers or comments. Does anyone wish to speak? No?
She checked it.
Did she?
Fifty checked.
Okay, if we don't have, do we have any comments?
I don't think you need to.
If no one wishes to speak, then we will close the public hearing. Thank you so much.
I have a question. I'm, do you know what your plans are for school this fall, tentatively?
Um, tent, do I need to, please? Sure. Tentatively, the governor spoke this afternoon at 2 o'clock. He didn't give a release. He gave a press statement regarding the reopening of schools. Superintendent of Schools, Dr. James Lane, Deputy Department of Education, released a document today to, the governor's everything. It's 136 pages. It's been in my hands for about an hour, and I've worn the corners off at this point already. We're working through it. But, what it will look like specifically in Smith County, we don't know yet. We know that there will be some type of virtual piece to it. And, and again, we're, we're using some of our CARES Act dollars to build that infrastructure to move forward and build a more robust online, online presence as we move forward. Our hopes are that we'll have some normalcy soon, but we don't know what that will look like by the start, and all this.
Just a comment, and this is just me randomly spouting out thoughts.
Yes, ma'am.
If there is an event where there's a child that may have to do it virtually, but, but they don't have internet access, would it be a possibility to allow them to use a community space, like, for instance, in my district, Adewel Fire Department?
Absolutely. Yeah. The, the, couple of different things that are going on right now. We posted, we've made hotspots at every school in the county, so they can drive up and use that resource. Um, there's also different programs going on right now. Israel Aquin is working, and we saw a press release from him a couple of weeks ago regarding the Grayson County push there. And he's working with Appalachia Power to establish mobile hotspots in remote areas of communities all through southwest Virginia. And it's a, it's a private partnership type thing, where we can buy into that and establish those that have pricing in different localities. But additionally, the state's pushing for additional revenue to come in to help solve this problem. It's not an overnight fix. That's our issue.
Sure.
I, I do think that there'll be federal dollars come down too, to help navigate this issue throughout the nation. But, within the state, it's, it's certainly a problem. But, to answer your question, absolutely, wherever there's access. But, we also have, we have a committee established to deal with the issues of geographic location, and that's what you're talking about.
Yes.
And, and one thing that we may be able to utilize is our food distribution system and jump drives. So, it may not be live instruction. It may be a day-old instruction, but at least they'll do it every day, if we have a voting start. So, that's one of the possible packages. We'll pull parents in and speak with them about their preferred method for those that don't have internet access.
Great. Well, if I can help with any of that, I'm happy to.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Any, any others?
I want to know what you done with Matt McCann. First time I even seen him here, having a comment on the school budget.
I had a meeting last night. I guess it's in the valley, isn't it?
Yeah.
Is he recovering well?
Yes, we're good, yes.
Good.
Thank you, Dr. Carter.
Madam Chairman.
Yes.
I have a question, not so much for Dr. Carter, but more for Erin. He touched, Dr. Carter touched on the CARES Act dollars that are available. And in this program here that you handed out, the Coronavirus, Coronavirus Virus Relief Fund, of the 2.6 million and change. Forgive me, I've lost my place here. I thought I read last night that it had something in there about telecommunications. Could these dollars in this particular fund somehow be used for the school to address some of their, um, shortfalls in, in their current infrastructure plan to reach out to the, to the, to the children in the remote areas?
Yes.
You have your own grant too. Is that correct, Dr. Carter?
Are you, were you, I didn't catch the first part. I apologize. Is it the United Way?
United West of West Virginia is working. And again, they're not funding. They're providing an opportunity for us to have a shared cost in, in hotspots throughout. And again, all of southwest Virginia. Their, their footprint is rad from city through Lee County and then some western city.
I actually met with Travis last Thursday on this, so, so, um, he's got funds that he would like to leverage and, and double his ability to put in hotspots and pay a part of it. And I, I do think that this money, we'll go for that.
Yeah, 'cause right here, I found, finally found my place here. Panic under pressure here. Can't find my stuff.
Me too.
Number, number four, second bullet point, it says, "Expenses to facilitate distance learning, including technological improvements in connection with schools," uh, excuse me, "school closing to enable compliance with COVID-19 precautions." So, I kind of interpret that to be a semi-fit to reach out to, as you, as Lori, I'm sorry, Mrs. DeWolfe. Alluded to a, a neutral site for the kids to come and be able to access that they may not have at their home. So, I guess my comment would be, we need to make sure we don't leave those dollars unspent if it does fit that bill to.
Yes, sir.
Help you.
And one additional cost that we're incurring to the tune of right, close to $750,000 is, is implementing a one-to-one initiative for all students pre-K through 12. So, you know, we took a couple of years planning to implement a 9 through 12, and from the close of this year, we've had to adjust and implement a one-to-one initiative where every student has a device from pre-K all the way through, through grade 12. That costs us right at $750,000. And we, our plan is to utilize close to, we want to earmark $500,000 of our CARES Act funds for that, and we'll use VPSA funds and carve out of our budget for the remainder. So, thinking, thinking about the use of CARES Act funds from a locality standpoint, I would assume that end-user devices would be a piece of that too, but I may be wrong. So, if you need any help, not necessarily from the hotspot, um, but also from the end-user, you could free up some dollars for the school business.
Dr. Carter?
Hotspots.
Excuse me. Did, isn't there a grant also for the school systems? Did you say it's 1.1 million dollars?
May I share their intended use of 1.1? So, with the 1.1 million dollars, there's, there's an anticipated revenue shortfall with the close of FY 21 due to the COVID-19 issue with the sales tax, uh, sales tax concern. So, as we move through the budget process, we intend on using $500,000 of CARES Act funds for end-user devices, iPads and Chromebooks, and preserve $600,000 to help us close that financial gap to end FY 21. So, it's a precautionary fund. Uh, the good thing about our CARES Act funds, it, it goes through 2022, and I think yours is depleted a little sooner. I may be wrong, but I think you have a quick return on that yet. So, what we're able to do is work to close out 21 as precautionary funds of $600,000. If it does not come to fruition and we need it, then we can roll that into 22 and continue to build a more robust infrastructure. So, you know, we're moving, moving ahead precautionary, but still in a forward manner to provide what the students need.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was gonna ask about hotspots, but it's, we'll, we'll work it out later. But, it seems like your schools are probably, do you have hotspots already there? And we, we need to move out from there.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that was my understanding.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, we had closed the public meeting, so there was just extra discussion. So, we'll move on to the next public hearing.
Too early.
Well, it's too early. Okay, let's go to the agenda. Seismar, did you want to do the building and grounds?
Yes. Ma'am, let me get to my page here. Page 67 of your packet is information from our Building and Grounds Committee meeting that was held on Tuesday, June the 2nd, at 10 a.m. here at the County Office Building in Ten. This was myself and Mr. Ross Call. There are two items that we discussed. One of them is the issue with the location of our voter registrar's office. As you all know, early voting is going into effect this year, and basically, we're gonna have about 6,000 people, which is what we're anticipating, coming in for early voting. This building and our parking lot is not really set up to be able to handle that. So, we've looked at some other locations that the county owns that we could possibly relocate the voter registrar office to. One of them being the Cornerstone Building, which is across from the courthouse and next to the parking garage. So, as far as parking is concerned and availability of the handicap ramps, different things like that, accessibility, that office space is fitting for the purpose. Unfortunately, right now, it's being rented by Mount Rogers. They've been there for several years, and we're basically on a month-to-month agreement with them. And, so we had actually given Erin permission to look into that situation. Now, in that meeting, we did not discuss what we newly learned. Can I share that? Or?
Yes.
Okay. So, basically, what we learned is, after Erin and Sandy went down to visit and determined that it was a good location, we have learned that Mount Rogers invested about $37,000 to do some updates on that facility in 2018. But, from the best of our knowledge, it doesn't look like it was necessarily approved by the board. So, I don't know if it was just a decision they made on their own. I personally, if I'm renting a property that I don't own, I'm not gonna invest $37,000 in it if I'm on a month-to-month lease, but that's what happened. So, I guess, from, from our standpoint, for the Building and Grounds Committee, we need to decide, or I guess the full board can decide if we want to reimburse them for that money. That's the request that they're making. They've sent us copies of the invoices and different things that they have, so.
Yes, in other words, if we, if we ask them to move out, or have them move out, and we move the registrar's office into that building, their request is, if we do so, that we pay back the improvement dollars that they put into the building. And that was done to the tune of about $37,000. That's their request.
So, our recommendation, as it stands, in the minutes from the June 2nd meeting, was to move forward with that, but we didn't know at that time about the $37,000 in upgrades. So.
I think Mr. Stevenson has a comment.
Yeah, for my ignorance, 'cause I really don't know. What, how many people usually comes in here on a normal voting? I mean, you're saying, what I get, what I heard is you're saying 6,000's coming on this one. So, how many do they normally deal with?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't know the answer to that. Basically, what, from what I understand is, the state has kind of given a, an idea of a percentage of people that come and do early voting.
Yeah.
Uh, so that's where that 6,000 number is coming from.
What I get confused here is, and I guess Duncan McGregor, is he still the state representative on a vote in rest?
Yes, Duncan's on that.
We got hit up with this last year. On a new place, a bigger place. And we actually asked some of the state reps, and they said it wasn't up to us. It was up to the state to find it for them. And I guess the question I don't understand is, we dealt with it. I was been here ever since I worked here, or ever since the building's been here. And after 10 years of retirement, and then all of a sudden, we, the house is burning down. We gotta move. We ain't got room. I'm just, I'm a little confused.
Sure. And I, I think a lot of that is because of the volume of traffic that would be coming in and out of here, and the dates, like, on the weekends that they, they have to be open. On Saturdays, there's a certain number of, I think there's three, is it three Saturdays they have to be opened?
Is that three Saturdays before the special election, or?
Yes, so it's three Saturdays before the November election.
So, was the schools, do they get utilized too then? I mean, you know, I voted to agriculture bill, dude.
That's only on election day itself. So, on the Saturdays, anybody that would want to come and do early voting would actually have to come to the voter registrar's office.
Have to come here, anybody in the county.
Right.
Is this the first time that they've allowed in, early voting?
Yes, this is a new thing, which is, which is why this is brought up. So.
It's a one-time, first-time deal.
Right.
So, it may not be again for a while? Is, am I correct?
Well, every election from here on out will have early voting.
Okay.
So, that's one of the reasons, 'cause as you said, they've been here before asking for space now. The reason that it seems like we're putting out a fire now is because, in addition to the space they already needed now, you're combining that with-
It's, it's changing every year. I got you.
Right. So, it's kind of a state mandate that we're having to deal with, is a good way to put it.
I got you. First time.
Right. Which is kind of common. Unfortunately, a state requires us to do things, but what does give us the funding to, to help.
I just couldn't figure out how we done it all along. Now, we can't.
Right.
But I got you.
Yes.
Thanks for explaining.
Certainly. So, since it's not the direct recommendation from our original minutes, I guess we're gonna need a motion for whether or not we want to reimburse Mount Rogers for.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little lost. Was there a motion to move the registrar's office?
Okay, so from our Grant, Building and Grounds Committee meeting, our recommendation at that point is what you see in Bullet Point 1. We directed Erin to look into moving the voter registrar's office to the Cornerstone Building. In his efforts of doing that, this, that's when we found out the $37,000 in renovations. They're requesting that they be reimbursed for that.
So, the committee didn't recommend a move?
No. So, there's not-
They're just seeking information?
Correct.
Okay. So, Erin's brought that information back?
Correct.
Who wanted to bring it to the full board?
Right.
And so what, I think what Scott's getting at is that you will have to first make, make the motion to move, and at the same time, probably make the motion to pay, if you wanted to vote, at least specifically say to vote.
I, I think you have two decisions, right? Do you want to move it, period? Does it need to be relocated to serve the citizens if they, if the current location cannot? Once you make that decision, then you're breaching, or not breaching, you're terminating the lease with Mount Rogers, right? So, you can move into that building. And you'll give them an end date of when they have to be out. And my understanding is, Mount Rogers has asked, has requested, if you terminate my lease, that you pay us the money we spent on improvements.
Correct.
So, I, I think you got two issues going on. You can do it in the same motion if you want to. So, I'm just trying to understand what position we're in. So.
Are they good moving, Lori? What are they doing?
They, they can move, and so.
But are they happy? Are they smiling? Are they throwing sticks at us?
They were neutral, is the best way I know to say that.
If we, if we pay them.
I expected to be jumped on, but they were very nice about it. And they said, "The, the one thing we do ask is that you give us 60 days to move out. By the time you tell us that we're moving out, we need 60 days to find another place and get moving to the other place." And that sounded plenty reasonable to me.
Yeah, I keep asking the question. Is that getting hit from the head? Is that getting hit from the A? Is that part of you? Are you, is that part of Mount Rogers, or?
No.
I guess, I only have one more question. Is this six thousand dollar, six thousand people coming in, is that once a year, or is that something that's going to be on a daily thing, or going to have a big trade of people coming in? Is, could, I mean, if we accommodate them for, could we accommodate them temporarily for the special election every year at a certain place? Or do we need one twelve months out of the year?
It varies on, there could be four hundred people that come one day and two the next, because since it's early voting, if you go to Walmart one day and you say, I don't think I'm going to stop buying, vote, you can, and you and three hundred other people may have that same thought. Whereas, the next day, there may only be a handful of people that do that.
So how many months does this involve? I'm still.
This is forever.
The whole twelve months.
From here on out, the rules have been changed. Whereas before, you had to petition, you had to request, and had to have a reason. Now, you could just, they've extended the period a little bit, I think fifteen more days. For every election that they hold, the town election, the local elections, special election, people will have the right to just stop in and vote.
At any time during the twelve months.
At any time during the twelve months.
How many days before the election?
Forty-five days.
So there's forty-five days of this special voting?
Yes, for each election, there's a forty-five day block that you have to keep your doors open.
Okay, then that was my question. For forty-five days, we need a bigger spot.
For every election.
For every election.
For every election, for forty-five days, we need a bigger spot.
Yes, sir.
And it also had to be bigger to store all the voting machine and all that stuff, that's be in the same place.
Right.
And you, once you put out there, like where the location is, you can't change it back and forth.
Has to stay there.
Yeah.
Well, it requires a lot of notice if you're changing it.
Right, without.
Is this place handicap accessible?
It is, yes.
I have a question about where they did the, and you've talked about it, but I haven't heard, where they did the repairs, or the updating and remodeling. What went on in their, like Lori said earlier, if I've got a month-to-month rent, I'm not going to go in and do a lot of expenses unless I know I'm going to have it for a while. Did they contact us? What did we do? What, can someone fill me in there on what went on again?
I thought there was no signed contract to do this or agreement.
The information that I have, as best I can explain, is this. I have an email from Michael Carter that was him putting out an RFP for someone to purchase or lease that building. And then I have the, it used to be the CSP, but it's Mount Rogers Community Services, and I have them responding to him saying, we just put such-and-such amount of dollars into this building, we would like to make you an offer, but for that amount to be added to whatever our bid is, when you all are taking the bid into account in your tabulation, in other words, it increases the amount that they have bid, because they have spent that on the building.
To buy.
To buy or lease, or yeah, to buy, exactly. And it, honestly, I'm doing my best to interpret, but it seemed from his response that he was not aware of the money being spent, and that this was a change in the way that he would interpret the RFP process. From there on out, it, it seems like the whole thing died. But from my understanding, in doing a little bit of digging, there was actually a bid given by the CSP, that bid was low, too low, and the board did not.
That is correct.
Okay, then thank you.
We, we looked at, and sorry, ma'am chairman, at one time, the board, and I think he was here, we discussed selling some buildings and actually took bids on some, and the ones that come in real low, that didn't make good feasible sense to sell, we dropped. That was particularly one of those buildings that come in way low. The county had debated on one time to either keep ownership or sell it, so they put out sale bids, and they put a bid in. But when the bids come in, the present board voted not to sell anything because they was so low.
Okay. That was my take on, thanks for clarification, I obviously wasn't here, but that was my, how I understood it.
Now, I remember them putting some money in, saying they had fixed some things, but I don't ever remember the board approving for them to spend any money whatsoever to repair anything or requesting that. So the best of my knowledge, that was all on them.
And about that time, the lease changed from a year-to-year lease to a month-to-month lease.
That's great.
It went to a short-term lease term.
That's great.
Don't have any idea on what repairs they're talking about, either.
God, those invoices, don't you?
Yes, a large part of it was just painting, but there were some other things, some outside work.
Bathroom and kitchen. Is that right, Lori? Wasn't a bathroom renovation, and a kitchen, and some painting?
What did they do there? Charlie, do you know?
I have no idea.
I mean, what, what department of Mount Rogers? I hate to cut a hand off it. We may need somewhere down the road. I'd like to know what they do for the county.
That is a division of their mental health, and.
I probably need that more than anybody.
Madam Chairman, I might shut some eye on that. At one point, they were kind of a step-down crisis intervention for the state hospital up here, so patients could go in and spend a short-term intervention that would prevent them from being, I'm not sure what word I want to use here, but further evaluated. It was, it was a short-term stopgap, is what it was.
Do you know if they're still doing that?
I'm sorry?
Do you know if they're still doing that?
At that point, they're no longer, because they built the new facility, I'm turning around, it's just been never here, that they now have the big facility here that they're in. And that one was taken offline, to my understanding, as far as a patient housing unit.
Our sheriff may shed some light on the subject, I can't.
Also, they hold up.
Right.
So is that detox air name?
I think it's just office space, honestly.
Oh, okay.
And there's another entity that had been speaking to the county during the courthouse renovations, and they had been told that there would be an office that they could use in the courthouse, and then that fell through. So they're in another location, that lease is getting ready to be terminated, so had asked us if there was a space that we may be willing to rent to them. So somewhere near the courthouse, which this makes sense as well, so that would be.
So you could make a multipurpose out of it.
Correct. And it would basically kill two birds with one stone.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I might just go ahead and make a motion that we terminate the lease with the Mount Rogers group, and we'll handle the financial part of it in a second motion, but just, the first motion is that we terminate that lease with the intentions as moving our registrar and anything else in there that we might want.
We have a motion from Mr. Atkins, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
I don't.
Any opposed? So we have six in favor and one nay.
We are going to give them a notice, though, we ain't going to throw them out on their head.
Yeah, they get sixty days, which technically is double what we're supposed to give them because it's only thirty days that are required.
Okay, so you have a second.
Well, I just, I think we need to talk more about, and maybe I make a motion, then we talk about it. But the financial, you know, I want to keep good relations, but this is county money we're talking about, too. I don't think we would pay, should pay the whole thirty-seven thousand, whatever, because, you know, it's depreciating a little bit, you know? So, but I'll make a motion that our, we have our buildings and grounds people, we send it back to our buildings and grounds, let them work on a dollar figure, if any, to.
I'm good with that. I think we ought to ask Mount Rogers for some receipts, and, you know, if you spent thirty-five thousand dollars, let's see where you spent it. I'm good with sending it back to the building, but I, you know, I think we ought to be fired with them. If they done something to upgrade the building and keep it up, then I think we owe them. But I think, on the other hand, I want to see some paperwork.
Okay, so that's a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes. All right, it is now six o'clock, so we can open the public hearing for. For the Conroak Green Cove Laurel Valley Festival application. Lisa, do you want to read the advertisement?
Public hearing notice. Miss County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June nine, 2020, at six p.m. for sending their affirment Smith County Office Building to 121 Bagwood Circle, Marion, Virginia, to consider the following application for an annual music or entertainment festival committee under the code of Smith County, Virginia. The Conroak Green Cove Laurel Valley Community Association has submitted a festival application for an event to be held on Sunday, September twenty, 2020. This event will be held at the Conroak Music Center, 6535 White Talk Road, Troutville, Virginia, 24378, and will be held between the hours of eleven a.m. and five p.m. At this public hearing, subject to the rules and procedures of the Board of Supervisors of Smith County, Virginia, any person may speak, may appear and state his or her views thereon. A copy of this application, along with their maps and plans, are on file in the office of the County Administrator of Smith County at the address given above, and may be viewed Monday through Friday, eight a.m. to five p.m. If it applies with Americans with Disabilities Act, persons requiring special assistance to attend and to participate in the public hearing should contact Clay Williams, Smith County AEA Coordinator, at two seven six seven eight three three two nine eight, extension eight three one five, at least forty-eight hours prior to the public hearing, done by the order of the Board of Supervisors, Aaron Sizemore, Interim County Administrator.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Having seen it, we don't look to have a rowdy group here. I move, we waive the reading of the rules.
Okay, we have a motion to waive.
Second.
A second, all in favor? Any opposed? All right, so we now have the floor open for any speakers or comments regarding this public hearing.
I'd like to move through. We just hope that y'all will speak it to give approval, so we can have our festival, that is the big, those are extra for us, and somebody special will give us approval.
Well, we appreciate you being here, and of course, this is an annual thing for us, so we appreciate you coming.
Well, we came through a hailstorm, rainstorm, a big wreck on interstate.
Oh, wow. That deserves extra, extra consideration. Anyone else wishing to speak? If not, we will close the public hearing. Do we want to have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion to approve if we can legally do it. These good ladies are here every year and bring a lot to the community, and we want them to get home safe, so I'll make that motion in a second.
And also, I'm hoping to make them get home safe.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes. Thank you so much.
Madam Chairman, if I can make a comment? Since these sweet ladies are here and traveled all the way here, I call them my grandmas. So I have my biological grandmothers, but I have like ten grandmothers in Conroak that fix breakfast the first Saturday of every morning, so if you don't have anything to do, go over there, because their gravy's better than any I've ever had before.
Wow.
And be sure to.
I'm not a grandma, I'm a housebound.
You're my aunt.
We just lost one of our ladies.
Yes.
Laura Flaherty, really, she was instrumental in our organization.
Yes, she will be greatly missed, and I send my condolences and prayers to her family and friends, so thank you all for coming over.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Okay, it's not quite time for the next public hearing. Let's go back to the budget report from the Building and Grounds Committee.
Great, and the second item that we discussed in the Building and Grounds Committee meeting was in regards to the HVAC system at the Health Department. Unfortunately, that, the air conditioning stopped working last week during a super-hot day, so Lynn from the Maintenance Department ran out to Walmart and purchased a window air conditioner to put in the room where they keep their vaccines, to keep them from getting destroyed, so that was a quick Band-Aid fix. There was some discussion to be had with Train about putting a temporary chiller in place, et cetera, et cetera. So thankfully, the other day, the gentleman from Train came back and said, it's going to be a six, basically a six thousand dollar fix, I can put nitrogen in it and make it last. And so that's kind of where we stand on that. And that was actually brought to the Budget Committee on the cost of that fix. I don't, Mr. Sizemore, you may want to make a comment.
He may have some additional information on that.
I feel like that we can discuss the budget committee report, because we actually have the number and everything in there, but yes.
That's, so my part is information, and then the motion.
We'll address it later.
Will come from the Budget Committee.
Okay.
But thankfully, we didn't have to go to the chiller route, because that would have been real expensive, so.
Okay.
So this is canceled here.
Correct, yes, so we don't, we don't need to take any action.
No actions required, um, it's just informational.
I have a question, how, how are they storing their vaccines? Because mine's in a refrigerator.
That's why they had to have the temporary air conditioner.
Yes.
So they keep them out in a room?
No, they keep that room cool.
I think, I think the room with the refrigerator's meant needed to be cooled, because obviously it would get really hot in there.
Because they did go purchase a small unit, I think.
It's a temporary.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So there's no action needed from the Building and Grounds on that item?
Thank you, thank you, Lori. So the next item is the Budget Committee, and that's Charlie.
I'm looking for the, okay, first page on, after the yell sheet, if you. Budget Committee met June fourth at one p.m. The sheriff was there for us to talk about a budget transfer. Sheriff Chip Schuler submitted a request for a transfer in the amount of three thousand five hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-one cents out of the line item twenty-one oh seven oh dash one oh oh one into line item zero two one zero seven zero fifty-four oh eight, so that's out of his, his budget entirely. That was for office expense, and it can be used for various things, including vehicle expense, maintenance, but it can only be reimbursed when expenditures are incurred. So these are reimbursable expenses from the Comp Board. So that was the first request.
Okay, so this is a recommendation from the Budget Committee. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes.
Okay, the second item, the Maintenance Department submitted a request for the following budget transfers. Three thousand five hundred and two dollars from, I'm just going to put the county Building and Heating Fund to the, to fund five four oh seven repair and maintenance. Also, five thousand two hundred dollars from the electricity, and they want to transfer that out of there, and they want to put twenty-six hundred of it into line item oh four three oh three oh dash fifty-four oh seven Health Department repair and maintenance for the air conditioning repair, and twenty-six hundred to oh four three oh two oh dash three zero zero four for the courthouse for the Addison Unit driver repair. Motion was made to approve the budget transfer request, as I just read, and was duly seconded, so that's the motion before the board.
Okay, so we have a recommendation from the Budget Committee. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes.
And we had another, we were an active little group, the Budget Committee was this month. On June eighth, we had another meeting. First item, the budget, budget item discussed was the HVAC repairs at the Health Department. Wright Valley District Supervisor Lori Deal made a motion to approve the necessary maintenance repair costs to the HVAC system at the Health Department. Rollup Supervisor Judy White seconded the motion, it was unanimously approved. So we approved the repair of the system, as we talked about here a few minutes ago.
Okay, is there any further discussion on that? Aaron, with cost or anything?
No, I mean, I think that you will need to vote.
Yeah.
Which will authorize us to cut the check.
Okay. So this is a recommendation. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes.
And the second item we talked about was the debt service in the, I'm adding here, it's not in our, but the jail and some other local, other localities have gone and looked at their debt service, with the low interest rates that we're experiencing out there right now. We're requesting, the Budget Committee is requesting, well, let me just read half word here. Wright Valley District Supervisor Lori Deal made a motion to evaluate the. Wright Valley District Supervisor Lori Deal made a motion to evaluate the county's current debt service to consider refinancing at a lower rate. Royal Oak District Supervisor Judy Wyatt seconded the motion. It was unanimously approved. So that's what we're asking, and this would also include the School Board, because their debt is on our books, so.
And as you're-
We'll look at it again.
Yeah, as you're saying, Mr. Atkins, that this is a great opportunity to try and reduce some of those interest rates and therefore save some county money that we can certainly put to use in other areas, so this is a recommendation from the Budget Committee. All in favor? Any opposed? The motion passes. Okay. Is it 6:15?
Yep, 50 seconds.
I think we can go on with that. All right, we now have on the agenda, we will open the public hearing for the Rich Valley Fair Festival application. And Lisa, would you mind to read the ad?
Public hearing notice. The Smith County Board of Supervisors will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, June 9, 2020, at 15:00 p.m. or soon thereafter in the Smith County Office Building, 121 Baglett Circle, Marion, Virginia, to consider the following application for an annual musical or entertainment festival permit under the code of Smith County, Virginia. The Rich Valley Agricultural and Fair Association has submitted a festival application for 10-day events to be held at the Rich Valley Agricultural Fairgrounds, 325 Long Hall Road, Saltwater, Virginia, 24370, during the following day, two times. Saturday, July 18, 2020, 17:00 a.m. to completion, except music events which will end by midnight per Smith County Code Section 5-98. Friday, July 24, 2020, 17:00 a.m. to completion, except those events which will end by midnight per the Smith County Code Section 5-98. Saturday, July 25, 2020, 10:00 a.m. to completion, except music events which will end by midnight per the Smith County Code Section 5-98. Sunday, July 26, 2020, 16:00 a.m. to completion, except music events which will end by midnight per the Smith County Code Section 5-98. Monday, July 27, 2020, 10:00 a.m. to completion, except music events which will end by midnight per the Smith County Code Section 5-98. Tuesday, July 28, 2020, 10:00 a.m. to completion, except music events which will end by midnight per the Smith County Code Section 5-98. Wednesday, July 29, 2020, 6:00 p.m. to completion, except music events which will end by midnight per the Smith County Code Section 5-98. Thursday, July 30, 2020, 6:00 p.m. to completion, except music events which will end by midnight per the Smith County Code Section 5-98. Friday, July 31, 2020, 8:00 a.m. to completion, except music events which will end by midnight per the Smith County Code Section 5-98. Saturday, August 1, 2020, 9:00 a.m. to completion, except music events which will end by midnight per the Smith County Code Section 5-98. At this public hearing, subject to the rules and procedures of the Board of, Board of Supervisors of Smith County, Virginia, any person may appear and state his or her views thereof. A copy of this application along with their maps and plans are on file in the office of the County Administrator, Smith County, at the address given above, and may be viewed Monday through Friday, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. In compliance with the Americans with Disabilities Act, persons requiring special assistance to attend and participate in the public hearing should contact Clay Williams, Smith County ADA Coordinator, at 276-783-3298, extension 8315, at least 48 hours prior to the public hearing, done by the order of the Board of Supervisors, Erin Sizemore, interim county administrator.
Madam Chairman, look at this rowdy group still sitting. I move we waive the, redo the rules once again.
Thank you, Mr. Atkins. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, do we have any speakers to address this?
No. I'm already blessed to be there.
You want to come up and just state your name and your address?
The President of the Board, elected President of the Board for the Rich Valley Fire Association. Now, we're, been asked, you know, are we going to cancel or whatever, but we're waiting to see what our state government does. If it comes down to it, we will have a limited fire. Most of this, except any inside, like the inside exhibits and the beauty pageants and stuff like that, we'll let it go, depending on, like I said, what the government allows us to do at that time. Fortunately, this year, we didn't do the truck pull, so there was no monies up front that we had to put out, and it's something that, you know, we can cancel the week before.
Good.
So you're not having a truck pull?
I'm sorry?
You're not having a truck pull?
We're not having the truck pull this year. In the past, it's been a big fine and all, but it's no money making for us, so. Time we get all their equipments and stuff out and all, and even though a lot of it is done, I did, still, how we rent sleigh and everything else, it's going to be, maybe we'll do it later on, and we were looking at some other stuff, and maybe we add to it in the future. But we want to keep our fire going. We, I know one, they were the oldest fire, but if you look back to our dates and things, 1932 was the first year we had the Rich Valley Fire, so we were, during Railroad 2, that was a couple, and during Polio, we had one consolation of it, but other than that, been around several years.
Wow. Just don't cancel a four-railer rodeo, that's all I ask.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. This coronavirus certainly has rearranged a lot of our local activities, and we're so glad you're able to continue a lot of your activities for this.
I move we approve it, ma'am.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? So we'll now close the public hearing. I think we'll probably go back to committee reports. And the next thing on the agenda was a Personnel Committee meeting that we had today, right before the Board meeting, and the items that we discussed, first of all, was the issue of the sheriff taking over supervision of all the 911 county dispatchers. And Sheriff, do you want to mention a little bit about that, or?
Answering the questions, if I could.
Okay. And Erin, you might want to just do some lead-in about why we were considering that.
There were some discrepancies in pay as, as far as our employees that were there and the Comp Board officers that were there, and in order to try to fix that, also, in order to include everyone under the same, you know, personnel policy and have them all under the same administration, it seemed like the best thing to do to move them from our staff and payroll and oversight on to sheriff's staff, his own payroll, his oversight. Of course, you know, the motion was made to that effect, but the motion was also made that the budget would be changed accordingly, so that we would fund it properly when we did so. There was a disparity in pay that was also fixed with that budget change, and Sheriff and also Shannon had made the comment that everyone who works there was for this change. They had been spoken to about it, they were all for this change, so I think that it works for us, and our staff, it works for the sheriff and his staff, and it also works for employees. It seems to me that it's right thing to do.
Right.
Question?
Yes.
So who is the pay disparity? The county employees or the comp employees? Who's the load?
It's generally been the county employees. I have the power to use, all right, so you can get somebody to quit or retire on the county side. I can only distribute those funds between five people. I can't give it to the other six. Comp Board is allowed to move money from what they give us, is what they give us.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to understand. I do it step by step. So if you take these employees over and one of them quit, and they're in your employees, and then you can distribute that money to your others, is that correct? Is that why you're doing this?
Only through my five. I just, I didn't have the power to give the raise to the county employees. Couldn't split that money evenly amongst them all. I tried to split it evenly amongst the five I have, which is not fair at all to the other.
The ones under the Comp Board or the ones under the county?
The ones under the Comp Board, none of them.
All right.
I can, I can do that, have that. Causes a little contention with other employees, which is understandable, but I have no power to make that change.
So your move to do this, your reasoning forward, is that when you could get in this situation, you can further the county employees, is what you're telling me?
That's right. Well, yeah, I can come to the board and say, I got this amount of funds, and then what can you do to help me with the other three or six? It's also a supervision issue.
Supervision?
It's also a supervision issue.
Yeah.
We've had a couple of problem employees that, under the county, the county policy-
But you have no power over, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, and that causes some contention as well, so. It's something that was asked of the prior sheriff for years to do, and once I got elected, nobody wanted to do it.
What, what is the difference between a comp pay and a county pay right now, range-wise? I mean, to bring them up even, is the county going to come up?
There's no difference, not that. You're supposed to pay the county, the county employees exactly what the start pay for the Comp Board requires. Then, as you raise them up, you can't be fair about it.
I got you.
And then, you got eleven people, it's hard to make them get along to start with, and just a little things. It's been a problem in the past. And then, the county policy, my policy, county policy's like this, mine's like this. It's a lot more strange.
Madam Chairman, if I may, the other thing too, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's going to be some new training coming up for the dispatchers that's more intensive on what they're going to offering.
I have to start going into service school, so I have to carry them on the academy list, no matter what.
Right, so as far as the training is concerned, it makes it a lot easier to funnel it through one.
I don't think I'd want somebody in my house I wasn't in charge of.
Right, no.
Yeah, it makes it a little difficult sometimes.
I think there's some good reasoning to make this move. Any further comments or questions? This is a committee recommendation. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Sheriff, thanks so much. The second thing that was discussed was advertising for a full-time EMS director. And I think especially during the past few months, as we've gone through this COVID-19 pandemic, we realize how important that position is, and it's really increased our awareness. So the recommendation from the Personnel Committee today, Lisa did come up with an advertisement that-
Name a job description that I could fit into an advertisement, yes.
That, I think all the board might want to have a copy of at some point, that, so the proposal was to start the edit, the advertising if the Board approves it as soon as possible with a two-week cutoff time, so that is recommend- Erin, do you want to add anything else to that as far as further explanation on it, or?
No, ma'am, just an authorization for us to run an advertisement for the EMS coordinator.
So that is a committee recommendation. All in favor? Any opposed? So Erin, you have permission to do that. Thank you so much. Let the five-minute break, well, okay. All right, let's do it. So the Board will note, it'll take a five-minute break. Goodness. I know I put water in there somewhere. Honey, I've got some.
Since Charlie gets through here, I'm over.
All right. We'll call the Board of Supervisors meeting back to order, and we will call the, a public hearing for the proposed ordinance amendment to order. So Lisa, do you want to read the advertisement?
Smith County Ordinance Amendment Notice of Public Hearing. The Board of Supervisors of Smith County, Virginia, will hold a public hearing to receive public input regarding a proposed amendment to the following county ordinance. Division 4, Host Assessment for Prisoner Processing, Section 23-160, Assessment and Collection. Proposed amendment to change to $10, currently provided for in this ordinance to $20, as provided for in Senate Bill 149 in the 2020 session of the Virginia General, sendly effective 7/1/2020. The public hearing will be held Tuesday, June 9, at 6:30 p.m. or soon thereafter in the boardroom of the Smith County Administration Building, 121 Baglett Circle, Marion, Virginia, 24354. Interested persons may express their views by emailing citizens@smithcounty.org prior to the meeting. Written comments may be also, may also be emailed to the County Administrator, 121 Baglett Circle, Suite 100, Marion, Virginia, 24354, or by fax, 276-39314. All email, written comments, and faxes must be received by 20 p.m. through 9:00 p.m. A copy of the full text of the proposed amendment is available for public review online at www.smithcountyboard or by contacting the county administrator's office. Anyone having questions regarding any of them may contact the county administrator's office at 276-783-3298, Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. If it wants provisions of the Americans with Disabilities Act, persons requiring special assistance to attend and participate in this hearing should contact Clay Williams, ADA Coordinator, at 276-706-8315, at least 24 hours prior to the hearing. By the order of the Board of Supervisors, Smith County, Virginia, Erin Sizemore, interim county administrator.
Thank you, Lisa. Are there any speakers or comments regarding this? If not, we will close the public hearing.
Madam Chairman, I move we approve the issue in the public hearing here.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? We have a second by Mr. Call. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Next on the agenda is the Attorney's Report.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chairman, just a couple of things. One is the petition to appoint the Board of Equalization. The order has been entered by the court. It was entered yesterday, emailed to me today, so I just recently got that, that's why it's fresh in my head, but I sent that on to Commissioner's Office and to Erin, just for their information, just actually a few minutes ago. The other issue is I would request, we go into closed session today for consultation with legal counsel regarding the Beverly Cole versus Smith County case and the claim for attorney fees to discuss potential settlement or how we want to approach that case. So when we go into closed session later today, we can add-
We'll add that.
A7 legal counsel concerning the claim of Beverly Cole.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chairman, I have a question. Does that have to be discussed in closed session?
It does not have to be, no, but my recommendation is to discuss in closed session, as you're talking about potential settlement, you don't want to disclose your position of how much you will pay or those sort of things. When you come out of closed session, you're happy to say whatever you want about the case or the decision the Board has made, but it's your pleasure. If you want to do that in open session, you're free to do so, but I don't think you should disclose your bargaining position. That's just my opinion.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Farthing. Next is the Budget Adoption Procedure, and that's Mr. Sizemore.
Okay, so we, we finally, as I say, we, I mean, the Budget Committee has finally come to a balanced budget. In order to adopt this budget for next fiscal year, there's just a process we have to go for, go through. Many of you are aware and have done this several times, but in order to adopt a budget, you have to have a public hearing. That public hearing has to be advertised seven days before, and the vote made to adopt or approve that budget is held seven days after, and we have to work within those restraints. We also have to work within the restraints of when we can get ads to the paper, so on and so forth. Additionally, this year, with it being the year of the assessment and not, not changing tax rates, but with the assessed value of your real property going up, then your assessed real property tax is going to go up more than 1%. And when that happens, you have to go through a public hearing for a tax increase, even though you're not having a tax increase. It's actually that the levies will come in higher, but you- It's actually that the levies will come in higher, but you will not be increasing your rate of tax. So in order to do that, you have to have 14 days before a public hearing. You have to have a public hearing specifically for the rate. This is not your budget public hearing, this is a rate public hearing. These two are two different things, but they have to be done 14 days before. However, on that date of that public hearing, you can vote to adopt a rate. You don't have to wait the seven days like you normally have to wait for your budget. I know I'm talking around in circles, but these are the parameters that we're working with when we're working out this schedule. In order to do all of these things and have them approved before July, then we will have to run an ad this Saturday for the budget and an ad for the tax increase. A special call meeting will have to be held on the 22nd. Normally, the meeting would be on the 25th of this month, but in order to get the time after the public hearing, seven days to be able to adopt your budget, this meeting will have to be held on the 22nd. The ad will be around the 13th, or a public hearing on the 22nd for your budget, and then you will have another special call meeting on the 30th. And that special call meeting will include your public hearing for your tax rate, and it will be the first time because of lapse of seven days that you can vote to adopt your budget. If you are okay with this process, then someone will need to make the motion to authorize us to run the ad and, for the tax and the ad for the budget on 13th. And then our chairman, chairperson will have to call those special call meetings on the 22nd and on the 30th.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chairman.
I'll second.
To, the motion is to run the ad and for this?
To run the ad.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion to run the ad, a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. So should we, should I do that special call meeting now?
You can, yes, I think while it's on our minds.
Okay, so I would like to request the clerk to do a special call meeting for June the 22nd and also for June the 30th.
The purpose of this 22nd meeting is for a public hearing on the budget?
Yes, for a public hearing on the budget.
Okay.
And the purpose of the meeting on the 30th will be to adopt the budget and to approve the tax rate.
Okay.
Public hearing on tax rate, do it.
Yes, it's also for the public hearing, but the public hearing will be established in the ad, but yes.
Okay, so is that all you need from this?
For that?
What time? Five?
I suspect
Five would be good. So, June the 22nd at 5:00 o'clock and June the 30th at 5:00 o'clock?
We will schedule those public hearings for five, and we will continue with the meeting after those public hearings to make those decisions, if that works before.
Do you have anything further?
Are we going to have a regular meeting on the 25th?
Continued meeting?
Yes. Okay.
What do you recommend, Aaron?
Like every other month, we have things that we can do and probably things we need to do.
All right.
I know that's a lot of meetings. If you decided not to hold that, because they are special call meetings, we have to state a task and we can't branch out if new things come along. However, with a continued meeting, if things come along during the month, they can be added to that agenda, we can address them then. I I'm on the fence about it myself.
Madam Chairman, I at least think we probably need the, if we don't do it, if we don't add the verbiage now, we need to be on the 25th, we need to be able to pay some accounts payable into the year type expenses we want in the current year. Plus, we probably have a request from the school board to pay those two salaries that we don't, the July and August payroll.
If you're meeting on the 30th, you could do it maybe on the 30th, because that's the end of the year, you'd have a carryover motions, all that stuff goes with the budget. So the special meeting could be to adopt the budget and take care of year-end matters in that meeting.
That would be better, you think? Yeah.
If that could get us out of the 25th, I'd love it.
Yeah, but I think that would be acceptable for us. Okay, Aaron. We need to go into closed session? Is there a motion for closed session? Is there something else?
I just wanted to clarify, we're talking about the 22nd and the 30th and not the 23rd.
Exactly.
Perfect, okay, good.
So we need a motion for closed session?
Yes, I will be happy to read that if notice is required. Madam Chairman, I propose, make a motion, we go into closed session pursuant to the Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3711, Section 8.1, Personnel, Consideration of Employment of a New County Administrator, and I don't have the verbiage for
A7.
I'm sorry, did I jump?
No.
A7, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation.
On the Cole case.
Concerning the Beverly Cole case.
On the Beverly Cole case. Is that complete?
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? We are now in closed session.